I'm in council to order. Uh, quick treasure, uh, I guess before we get started, um, to go over some of the ground rules on this. Uh, because it is an electronic meeting, we have to do a roll call vote for every, uh, vote that we take. So I'll go through, I'll start with President Pro Tim Connor, and then I'll just call off the names of the city council people, uh, to see if you vote aye or nay, uh, and we'll do that on every vote that we take. Uh, because we are going to be discussing sensitive documents, um, regarding the small business resilience grant. I would like to remind you not to discuss specific financial information. I'm okay if you say, uh, business didn't turn in all the documentation, but I do not want to discuss specific financial information, um, at a public meeting. Quick treasure, Aldridge, is there anything else I forgot?
I don't think so.
All right, well, I'll hand it over to you to do a roll call.
Righty, Gail Conner.
Here.
Andy Flora.
Present.
Mike Isley.
Present.
Spencer Kingery.
Present.
Cody Nelson.
Present.
All right, thank you. Uh, we'll move first to the, uh, minutes from March 2nd, 2020. Are there any additions, tractions, or amendments to be made to this set of minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve.
Mike Isley with a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Spencer Kingery with a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, I'll call the question as of the passage of the March 2nd, 2020 minutes. President Pro Tim Connor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Flora.
Aye.
Councilman Isley.
Aye.
Councilman Kingery.
Aye.
Councilman Nelson.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five oh. Uh, we'll move next to the minutes from April 15th, 2020. Any additions, subtractions, deletions, or amendments to be made to this set of minutes?
Um, should Cody's name be included in roll call? As an attendee?
I was present for the April 15th one, not the...
Correct, but I think you might have come after she did roll call, because that was the public hearing. But it doesn't, it doesn't show in roll call that she asked you.
I just did that change, so I'll make that change.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments regarding this? All right, hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion number one.
All right, Spencer Kingery with a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, who is that seconding? Cody Nelson?
Yeah, that was me, yeah.
Cody Nelson with a second, any further discussion? All right, I'll call the question, President Pro Tim Connor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Flora.
Aye.
Councilman Isley.
Aye.
Councilman Kingery.
Aye.
Councilman Nelson.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five oh. Move next to the minutes from April 27th, 2020. Any dis- distractions, deletions, or amendments to be made to this set of minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve now.
Andy Flora with a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Gail Conner with a second. Any further discussion? All right, I'll call the question as of the passage of the minutes from April 27th, 2020. President Pro Tim Connor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Flora.
Aye.
Councilman Isley.
Aye.
Councilman Kingery.
Aye.
Councilman Nelson.
Abstained.
All right, thank you, all four zero vote with Cody Nelson abstaining. Uh, so we'll move next to the discussion of the, uh, current round of the Delphi Small Business Resilience, Resilience Grant. Uh, I know there's a couple things we wanted to discuss before awarding. Um, I will, before we have that discussion, I'll pass it over to Emily with curtsy, uh, for some updated information from the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. Emily, you have the floor.
Hey, um, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi.
So, we got some information, and Shane, have you sent this out to anyone?
I sent it almost immediately after you sent it to me.
Okay, so I know the last time when we had the public hearing for the OKRA, um, grant, that we had two major questions. Um, the first, are sole proprietors, this one kind of came up from a couple of other communities, um, who are also participating in this program, so are sole proprietors eligible for this program? The answer that we got from the state today is if they have employees, they are eligible. If they do not have other employees aside from themselves, they are ineligible for this grant. Um, there is additional information as to how, if it gets a little bit, but that's the nitty gritty is if they have other employees to work for them, they're eligible. If they do not, they aren't ineligible. Um, any questions on sole proprietorship?
Does that include part-time employees, Emily?
Um, I'm assuming that they did not get into part or full-time, they just said employees. I can get clarification on that, though.
All right, council, are there any further questions for Emily regarding sole proprietors?
Okay.
All right, hearing none, go ahead, Emily.
All right, so the second one that we got, um, the big question was reimbursement. Um, I know originally that this program was already set to begin with, um, the city. Aside from, before you even applied for the OKRA funds, that you already were ready to put money aside and get your program rolling. Then the OKRA program came around, you guys were interested, and we decided to apply for that. Um, and the big question was, can, can we go ahead and grant those businesses money from our local funds? Um, be, and then be reimbursed using the grant dollars. So, the answer that we got from the state is, um, I'm gonna pull it up on my screen as well, so, um, you, it says, um, the community can use its own funds to pay out awards from the grant and get reimbursed. That's basically, that's the essential setup of how all CBBG grants work. Um, however, their biggest thing was they said, since that you have not yet committed any funds, that you can make awards to those applicants that are already there. However, do not give out the actual money yet. Because we have other steps that we have to do. Um, I know we've discussed the income verification, and that's the big thing for this, to make sure that you are eligible, that all of these people are eligible for these mon, for these monies, basically, so that you aren't in the end, um, if we don't meet that 51% LMI criteria, we don't want you to have to give money back. So we want to make sure that all these businesses who are applying, that that grant total is, you know, we meet that 51% LMI. So, basically, yes, you can make your selections, however, you cannot give out those grants, yeah. Do we understand that part?
When would you anticipate us being able to, uh, write those checks?
I would love to tell you when, but I do not have that information.
I, I wanted to ask for some clarification. Um, if we put our own money from general fund into a special account, as per the letter Deb Gibson sent from the State Board of Accounts, and follow those guidelines, we can award money from a special account, we just cannot use the OKRA funds.
You can't use the OKRA funds to reimburse that money, correct?
But if we go ahead and give our own funds at this time, and then we need the LMI qualification and all of the eight steps in the information you got today from Eric Ogul, then we can use the OKRA funds to reimburse our general fund, correct?
Our understanding is that, read this again, I read it, reread it, read it and reread it. Um, so, our understanding from Eric in conversation was not to give money out, yeah.
Why not? Buying what funds, was he saying not to give out OKRA funds or any?
Well, you don't have OKRA funds yet.
Correct.
So you can't give those out quite yet. So, um, like he says on this, since you have not yet committed any funds, you can start making awards to fund those awards from the OKRA grant. However, they have to review and approve that you have met that criteria. Because if you don't meet that criteria and you start giving out money, you have to give all of that money back.
Okay.
So our understanding is if you can make your selections, and we can start doing that income verification to make sure that you are in fact going to meet that income eligibility, basically. Because if you, we start in this process and we see that we're not meeting that 51%, that causes a whole new issue, because we could have given out, say, you know, $50,000, and then you have to give that $50,000 right back to the state, because basically, you didn't, you're not eligible for that money, because you didn't meet that 51%. So they want to make sure that we can meet that. So basically, our first step is, hey, we gotta verify all those applicants are eligible, that we meet that 51% criteria, and then we can start rolling out the money once we meet that criteria.
Are we only sending, sorry, are we only sending to OKRA the applicants that we select or all applicants who applied?
It's up to the community, is our understanding.
Okay, that's what I understood too.
Who you have selected.
Okay.
Because those are going to be the only ones that would be applying for this money.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that help?
It does, thank you.
Okay.
So you're saying these businesses that are needing money right now, they've applied for the government money, those loans, and none of them have heard anything about those, um, they're gonna have to continue to wait so the state can look through all these applications again? I'm having trouble with that.
Okay, so they are actually going to be reviewing the applications. What the state is reviewing, and it's basically, it's our income verification. So we have to provide these forms to the businesses for their employees to fill out, to make sure that we meet that 51% LMI. If we don't meet that 51% LMI, you're not eligible for, for this grant program. That's where we're at right now, is we are waiting to determine eligibility. We believe that we can get there, um, just obviously off of some of the numbers and with the current, obviously with the current economic status, um, that we can meet those numbers. However, until we have that hard paper in our hand for those people to verify what that is, um, we're not... That's the only thing, the state does not, they go off of who you have selected. It's a local application, but then we have to verify the incomes of those applicants and their employees, basically, basically their employees.
And we don't know how long that's going to take.
We are currently, that income verification form is at the state being reviewed right now. Um, we are hoping by the end of this week to get that out to these applicants, so we can start going through that process. However, I don't know if, that's my timeline, I don't know if that's going to meet the state's timeline.
So we're looking at least two or three weeks before they'd ever think about getting any kind of money, then, right, at least?
At least, because there are other, like, we have, there are federal guide, like, federal steps that we have to meet in order to get through this process. And I don't know necessarily, they haven't given us a specific, they've given us an idea of a timeline, but they haven't given us specific date as to how quickly this is going to come forward.
Then from talking to some people, we're gonna lose the businesses here in town if we wait another two, three, four weeks.
I, I completely understand that, and I, trust me, um, I understand that, but when, I don't control that schedule.
I understand.
And we're trying, we're, we're doing our best to get, as soon as the state asks something or requests something from us, we do our best to get it right back to them, to help kind of speed up the process and hope that we can get that money out to those businesses as quickly as possible. Um, I know that's something that we're constantly in conversation with them, like, hey, what is the tech, what, you know, we know that there are these other programs that are going on, that there are these delays, um, that we're hoping we're not going to have all of those delays like some of the other programs.
Emily, I guess my question would be, could we run two parallel paths? Um, where we reached out to the businesses that have applied, and if they need the money now, we use local funds, knowing that it's possible we wouldn't get reimbursed, um, and for some businesses that may be able to hold off for a couple weeks to a month, um, hold off and use the OKRA funds for that? Is that a possibility?
I will defer back to that email, um, that goes to those answers that are within that, because that is in writing to Eric, and he clearly specifies out, um, what that reimbursement would look like. Um, I can take that question to him and ask him, but I would say, if you allocate funds right now to businesses, you do risk that not being reimbursed by the grant.
I would be in favor of that, too.
Emily, did they weigh in as to whether or not we should go ahead and pass a resolution to set up a special fund, uh, to receive the OKRA money if we do indeed receive it?
They, um, did not really give us any direction on that. I would say, since you already have been awarded, because basically, once you were announced at that press conference, they classified that as your award date.
Right.
We, I would say, go ahead and set a fund up, and we'll just wait for that money to come in. Um, just wait for it to basically be populated by the state funds.
But if we transfer any money into that fund and start awarding from that fund, then we risk losing the OKRA money.
I, I would, I would,
Yes.
We, in that way, yes.
Fair enough, thank you.
And President Pro Tim Connor, we are obligated to set up, um, separate funds whenever we receive grants, so that's something we would have automatically, uh, done, would be setting up that, that fund. Um, so I don't think it's anything we would need a resolution on, especially since we passed a resolution authorizing the application for the grant.
So has that fund been set up?
Book chair, as you're all due, do you want to weigh in?
I haven't yet, no.
Thank you.
It's a matter of assigning a number to it and putting a revenue and an appropriation account to it, so it's...
Right, I saw, according, according to the letter from Deb Gibson with the State Board of Accounts, it looked like there were some guidelines for setting up that account.
Guidelines for all grants.
All right.
Yeah, and if we follow that, um, the COVID response, because they do have all of the numbers of how it's supposed to, that we have to follow that, so we don't get any findings or anything further.
Okay. Okay.
All right, does the council have any further questions for Emily?
I wish that I had more information for you guys, I really do.
Um, I wanted to just...
What about, I, I mean, some of the things, uh, some of the applications, um, you know, now I don't remember, um, if they were sole proprietorship with no, um, no employees, um, but I might have scored them pretty well, you know, so they could get their grant money. Um, what happens to those applications, do those, I mean, if they're not eligible, do, do we just not submit those?
They aren't eligible for, to receive the CBBG funding. So I'm gonna ask, I'm writing an email right now to, um, my boss, we are keeping like a log of all of our communities, of all of our questions, so we can send just one mass email daily to the state of questions that come out. So I'm gonna ask him, um, if he's heard, because he has a, he's got a public hearing tonight for his program as well. Um, so I'm gonna ask him, you know, can we run, could the city run, allocate funds for those applications for those sole proprietors? Um, at the same time, I think my, in, my gut feeling is that you could probably do it, you just have to have it, those two monies couldn't be within the same program.
Sandy, we have six sole proprietorships and three of them have no employees.
Okay, I, I thought maybe, I remembered that, um,
I wrote it down.
I can't remember, yeah, I can't remember which ones, so...
I have that written down.
Okay.
Do we have any further questions for Emily?
Emily, when you make a contact, will you double check about NPOs? I talked to our community liaison from OKRA last week, Darren White, and he said NPOs qualify for the OKRA grant money with a stipulation that it cannot be used for salaries. So will you get clarification on that as well?
Right, so are you talking just general nonprofits?
Yes.
Okay. So do they qualify?
He said they qualify with the stipulation that they don't use the money for salaries.
Okay.
So I guess...
Just for overhead working capital and things like that, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the two questions that I'm taking, taking just for clarification, um, are if the Delphi, if the city runs a separate fund for their local grant program to fund the sole proprietors, is that eligible at the same time that you are utilizing the OKRA dollars? To, to main businesses?
Correct.
And can NPOs qualify for working capital?
Correct. Are there any other questions from the council that, uh, we'd like clarification on from the Office of Community and Rural Affairs?
Not at this time.
All right. At this point, um, I guess with that information, we should discuss how to move forward. I think after hearing from Emily, um, and I know some council members had some concern about the amount of documentation turned in, um, by some of the businesses that applied. Um, I guess my recommendation would be that we schedule another city council meeting for next Monday. Um, we open the application period, um, well, and, I don't know, maybe towards the end, till the end of this week, or maybe until the end of next week, and we schedule our city council meeting two weeks out, um, to give an opportunity for those that have applied and didn't provide sufficient documentation, um, to add that documentation, as well as allow any other businesses who did not apply by two Fridays ago, uh, to make their application, since we do not have a request totaling the $198,600. Um, I think that would help alleviate some of the pain that some city council members were feeling. Um, simultaneously, I could call all the businesses tomorrow, um, and see how dire of a need it is to receive funds right now, and I could get that information out to the council if we need to have a special meeting later this week or early next week. What are you guys' thoughts on that? President Pro Tim Connor?
Um, I know the application stated that funds are going to be awarded on May 7th, and I know there are people expecting to see something come to them on May 7th. So I know that's going to be, have, to be addressed. Um, I don't know by whom, I don't know how, but I believe that's something we're going to need to address. I think, since we only had 12 of our 37 applicants actually provide all of the documentation required, I think I would be fine with opening it back up for people to submit what was required of them, and also open it back up for other businesses to also apply that didn't have the opportunity to do so the first time around. But I think, from, from my understanding and from where this started with the Noblesville information from Kayla Arnold, they had 225 businesses apply, and they only awarded to a third of them because they did not get the required documentation. And I, and I do know we had some businesses here in town that did not apply because they didn't want to give up their financials. So I think that we have to stick with the terms of the application when we go into the awarding process. I think that's something that we need to, uh, be very cognizant of.
And I, I think in Noblesville, I mean, they also had requests that far exceeded the amount of funds they had available.
And that made their applicants ineligible, because that was one of the eligibility requirements of the application, to not requ, request more than was allowed. So those were automatically thrown out. And we did not have any of any requests more than our maximum.
All right, Councilwoman Flora, what are your thoughts?
Hmm, I know we had a business that tried to get the application in, in a, um, when it was originally due, and had some technical difficulties. So I, I do think that we owe it, you know, to at least open, so, so the people that had tried but didn't get, for technical reasons, the application in, I do think that it's a very good decision to open it back up. Um, and, and I'm worried that some of these, especially the newer businesses, um, that didn't maybe have a lot of capital to begin with, I, I am very concerned. So I, I would like to see about a way to get them, uh, uh, get them funded with something, even if it's from our own, our own city account.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Flora. Uh, Councilwoman Isley?
I would agree with the other two, um, open it back up and get applications completed, but like Councilman Flora said, and I believe Gail said too, that, um, if somebody's really struggling right now and not gonna make it another week or two, um, we said we would get it out a week later or so, and it's getting close to that time. Like Councilman, um, Connor said, we need to get them, see what we can do, even if we have to take it out of our own funds, um. I'm, I really hate to see some of these new businesses go down, and they were doing so well. Um, I, I know we don't, we don't, but yet we do to keep this city growing like it's going, so we need to do what we need to do to keep them going.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Councilman, Councilman Kingery?
I'm gonna agree with the other three, I think we need to open it back up. Um, but I don't think it needs to be an extended period of time. Um, like some of the other guys have said, that, you know, some of the smaller businesses are struggling and may not make it through the rest of this month. Um, so I think if we open it back up for a short, short period, so that way we can get money awarded, whether it be with the OKRA funds or our own funds, which originally we set up for with our own original funds.
Yeah.
I mean, we got the money there. So, I mean, that's just, that's what I'm thinking, I mean.
All right, Councilman Nelson?
So, um, I guess my kind of thinking or maybe understanding about this is that, um, yeah, we should probably open it back up, because a lot of these businesses didn't provide the necessary documentation, um, stated in the application. Um, I'm gonna assume that, uh, to get this OKRA money, that we're gonna need some pretty solid documentation provided to them to get that reimbursement. So that documentation's gonna be really important, important. Um, I'm, I'm okay with, I guess, opening it back up. Um, and then in addition to that, um, a lot of these sole proprietors that are, are gonna have no opportunity with OKRA, I would be okay with seeing that comes from a city, um, amendment, because we were already going to give.
Yeah.
Whether we got the OKRA grant to begin with, so...
All right, um, I guess if, if I made contact with all these businesses that have applied, say, tomorrow, uh, to assess a need, would the council be okay meeting both next Monday and two Mondays from now? So next Monday would be to award any funds that are needed, uh, to keep the business afloat, you know, here in the next two weeks. And then the following Monday would be to make awards, um, using OKRA funds to give everybody an opportunity to submit the proper documentation, or people who have not applied, uh, to go ahead and submit an application. Would that be okay?
I clarify what you're, you're saying, the 11th and the 18th?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, how are you going to determine need?
I was just gonna go off of their oral, uh, statement. Do you have any recommendations?
Maybe use your, your scale that you had in the rubric to determine, like, a more, like, solid time basis, I guess? Like, how many weeks until you're unable to pay this, this, and that, sort of whatever?
And that goes with the documentation part of us not getting some of the documentation for the majority of the applicants, so. I would think that they, they can provide that. That gives you the need.
Other thoughts on, uh, showing need for immediate assistance?
I would agree with those two guys.
We have to have some documentation.
What kind of documentation are you thinking?
The documentation we requested in the application.
Okay, but no additional documentation to show immediate need?
I mean, um, I guess if you were to, you like, um, Councilwoman Connor said, you know, if you were to actually give the, provide the documentation, asking the grant about like profits, losses, sheets, um, I mean, especially within the last month, to give us an idea of, you know, how downhill you're going now quickly.
Right.
Gives us a comparison, too.
And I know that there were some businesses that were pretty hesitant to provide documentation. I know that's not ideal, but I know that anytime I've had to apply for student loan grants or anything like that, I had to provide my entire life, so.
I think what we're gonna run into, and I'm not trying to be difficult, is that if we change the terms of the application, you have to open it up to every small business and make sure that everybody gets a chance to apply. Because what you're going to do is you're going to open us up for a lawsuit.
Well, I was, I guess I was saying we, we simultaneously opened it up for other businesses to apply while we're asking for additional documentation from the businesses that didn't provide it.
My preference would be to meet the deadline of May 7th to those 12 businesses that actually turned in everything that was required of them and award money out of our coffers to those businesses that provided everything that was requested of them. Based on what we decided tonight about how we're going to award money and at what level we're gonna award money. And then open something back up for the other businesses that did not provide all of their documentation to get the documentation turned in to us that they can qualify for the OKRA funds, so they don't miss out on those funds.
What about businesses that have not applied?
Well, if we're going to open things back up, then I think that would be an opportunity in that week window or two week window for those businesses to apply as well. But I think we have to stick to the qualifications of the application. If you just start calling people and taking the honor system, you're gonna have some businesses who turned over their financials to us that are not gonna be very happy that they turned over their financials and now other people don't have to. It becomes.
And that's not what I was saying. I wasn't saying they had to not turn in their financial documentation. I was saying just calling them to get an idea of how many of the 37 businesses that applied have an immediate need as opposed to those that could hold off, um, for the OKRA funds.
Uh, again, I think you're opening yourself up to some legal issues if you do that. That's just my comment.
So if we were to only, if we were not to open it back up, um, to allowing businesses to provide the documentation and other businesses to apply overall, um, with the 12 remaining, I, I'm looking at the list, the 12 remaining, um, some of them I remember offhand, don't have any employees or they have contract employees that are, it's basically a sole proprietary ship or whatever. Uh, so I mean.
There was one that was a sole proprietor, but that one happened to have employees. So of the 12 that turned in all of their documentation with the application stating they're, they're going to receive money on May 7th, they would all qualify for funds. Because the one was a sole proprietorship, but that one has employees. So that would actually be also money that could be reimbursed to us from OKRA.
The employees is, uh, what's her name still? No, I think she left. Um, I was gonna ask, because I think one of them, oh, no, Emily, you're still here. Okay, so, um, does like contract people, like, that aren't technically like W2 or W4 employees, does that count?
So Eric did say, I'm reading back through, um, he did answer that. I'm trying to figure out, remember where he answered that at. OKRA had guidance, an employee is someone that is considered by the IRS as an employee. As such, independent contractors, individuals receiving 1099s are being paid on a contract basis. And business owners who don't have any other employees are excluded. So contract employees are excluded.
Okay. Thank you for that.
That leaves one of our 12, then that would not qualify for us to get it reimbursement for. But the other 11.
So I guess my thinking is, is that if we were to, again, not allow, um, for all these businesses to provide documentation, and maybe even open up to some other businesses, because we haven't gotten close to 200,000, is that we would be, um, I'm not gonna say waste, but not taking advantage of the possibilities that OKRA has provided. And I would like to see as much of that money be used if we've been awarded it.
No, I didn't say to not open it back up. I, I think.
Okay, okay.
I think to meet our timeline that was presented to them in the application for the 12 that did what was asked of them, I think we need to honor their commitment to do what was asked of them. And if there's any way for us to provide funds on the 7th to go ahead and do so. But for the other 30 that did not provide what was requested of them, then more than likely, they're gonna have to wait for us to get the OKRA funds. But I do think we need to offer them the opportunity to get their financial documentation in, or whatever it is that they didn't turn in. And I do have a list of everybody who turned in what as far as documentation. And then we can decide tonight if we want to open it back up for additional businesses as well.
I guess one of my thoughts on if we were to award to 12, um, prior to, you know, the rest, the other 25, is that some of the 12 were in the bottom tier of, uh, average score per score. I, is that something we want to consider? Is that if we had all the documentation that it's possible, we, uh, may not have selected, uh, those businesses to award to?
I think that's a determination the council has to make tonight as far as the levels of award based on the scoring rubrics. And we have to talk about those things yet tonight, too. We haven't made any determination as far as how much money we're going to give based on the tallies you put together.
Right. Um, I guess, uh, my thoughts were that we waited another week and saw what applications were in. If we got some new applications, that could change, um, how we feel about the tiers and levels of awarding.
Well, the only resolution we have before us tonight is to deal with the edit money. So we may need to put some other resolutions on the floor tonight so we can actually have a discussion about this and get things going.
Um, I guess discussion wise, how does the rest of the council feel about awarding to the 12 businesses this week? And then, uh, waiting on the other 25 and any new applications we receive? Uh, President Pro Tim Connor, I think I've got your thoughts on this. Uh, Councilwoman Flora?
Okay, um, what if, uh, we find out that OKRA will not reimburse us? And we've already, uh, some of these could have been, uh, OKRA eligible, um, I, 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 I guess, do we have, do we have the funds available to award the 5,000 or, or how much, however much we're gonna do? Um, uh, we're, knowing that we're not going to be getting that OKRA reimbursement if that's what ends up happening.
We do have the local funds available within the rainy day fund. And then if the council approves additional appropriation credit, we will have even more local funds available.
Okay, okay. Then I, I think that sounds wonderful.
What sounds wonderful?
Uh, to go ahead and, and the 12 that did get their applications in, uh, uh, for the guidelines that, uh, they get, they get at least a little bit of money at, at this point by the 7th.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Isley?
I would be in favor of helping the 12 out as soon as possible and then giving the other information and for the rest of them, open it back up like we talked about. I would be in favor of all of that.
Uh, Councilwoman Kingery?
So for clarification, how much money do we have in edit before, before we would vote to transfer?
Uh, give me a second here.
At the end of 2019, there was $552,000 in edit funds available.
You said 552?
552.
Well, I got, oops, sorry. I've got at the end of 2019, 6.4, 697, 31.
I think what you gave us in the budget binder did not include our, um, draw from the county.
So we, we got more than enough there.
Yeah, we have more than enough. And there's more than enough in the general fund. And when we create our special COVID account, we have to take money from the general fund so it can be reimbursed to the general fund, not, not to edit.
Yeah.
So we have a lot of decisions we need to make tonight.
Well, and when we made our application to OKRA, uh, we stated we were using from edit and rainy day funds. So Emily, I guess, could you clarify on that?
On which fund we're utilizing or?
Yes, ma'am.
We stated, um, edit fund within the application.
All right, but Councilwoman Kingery, I don't know if I got your thoughts on, uh, the 12 that have all their documentation doing an award this week?
I'm okay with it. And then we can open it back up for the rest to get the proper documentation and also new business, or businesses to apply.
And, uh, Councilwoman Nelson?
Yeah, I guess we can go and award the 12 and then continue to, uh, pick up applications and documentation.
All right. Is there any further discussion that the council wants to have regarding the, uh, 12 applications, um, that have full documentation? Is there a motion from the council to award these businesses and, um, give them the amount of funds that they requested?
I make that motion.
Yeah, Councilwoman Isley with the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I've got Sandy Flora with the second. Um, I'll open the floor to discussion. President Pro Tim Connor?
Captain, the only thing I would question about that is you stated to give them the funds they requested. And I thought this evening we were gonna make a determination based on our scoring rubrics as to how much money we were giving businesses. So again, if we.
I'm finding that, I don't know why I opened it up for discussion.
Tonight to give those 12 businesses what they requested, then moving forward, we need to understand that every business gets what they requested. Because if we set a standard to do that tonight, then that has to be our standard moving forward. And however we go, we need to all be on the same page and understand, because that was the motion you just made.
That motion can be amended, or we can have an amendment to that. So what are you guys', what's the council's thoughts on, um, prorating the amounts based off of scorers? Or just giving the full amount? Uh, President Pro Tim Connor?